Good evening and welcome to City Council Meeting for December 8, 2020. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with emergency directives from Governor Sisalak. And therefore, there's no public attendance. The meeting is being livestreamed. Comments will be allowed during the public comment period by call-in. The opportunity to email those or leave voicemails was also available. Items listed on the agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more agenda items for consideration may be combined. Or any item on the agenda may be removed. Or related discussion may be delayed at any time. I will call the meeting to order and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any public announcements this evening? None, thank you. We'll begin then with our first public comment period. Public comment during this portion must be related to an item on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. And as always, we ask speakers to be concise and civil. Again, this is the initial public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak? Madam City Clerk, were there any emails or voicemails for this?
Not this one, Mayor. Public comment.
Hi, doing? Like to make a public comment?
Go ahead.
Do you want me to start with my name and all that stuff?
Yes, please.
Okay, this is Mike Caruso, Boulder City resident. Calling to see about possibly figuring out a way to open up the dirt portion of the RC track, which unfortunately has declined to a point of not being able to be used. And would like to be able to use that track for Boulder City residents. Or have another area designated for off-road RC usage.
Mr. Caruso, is this related to one of the items on tonight's agenda?
No, no, as my understanding, you can do public comment before for anything? Or is it after for anything?
The second public comment period at the end is for any item.
My apologies.
No problem.
All right, Mr. Renes.
Thank you. Again, this is the initial public comment period. All right, hearing no other callers then, we will move to the approval of the regular agenda. Madam City Clerk?
No changes.
Madam City Attorney?
No changes.
And Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
Thank you. Bring it back to council. Any changes for the regular agenda? All right, anyone wishing to make a motion for approval?
May I move for approval of the regular agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move to the approval of the consent agenda. Again, Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm requesting to remove item number one, please.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney?
No changes.
And Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, we're requesting that item four be moved to the regular agenda.
Thank you. Any changes, council members? Councilmember Folda?
Mayor, I request that item number two be moved to the regular agenda.
Thank you. Any other changes? You wish to make a motion then? Councilmember Folda?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda with changes.
Thank you.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move then to item number two. Resolution 7189, interlocal agreement with SNWA. And again, I guess, Councilmember Folda, you had requested it to be moved?
Want me to introduce it?
Um, yes.
Okay. Let me get that. So this is approving the MCCP from SNWA, which is a lot of acronyms. But this is the Southern Nevada Water Authority. Their major construction and capital plan. This needs to be approved by all the members' boards. It goes through. So this is, I believe, a 10-year plan. The reason I brought this up is I just wanted to ask staff a couple of questions on it about how this would affect rate payments. And we have a separate facility and operations agreement with SNWA for any facilities or operations that affect Boulder City. And so I just wanted to clarify for the public how this plan of, I think it's $3. something billion, how that would affect our rates here in Boulder City.
Councilwoman Folda, Mayor and Council. Dennis Porter, Director of Utility Services. We actually have SNWA available by phone if we want to ask them that directly. I can answer it for them, I just didn't know if you want directly out of the horse's mouth. But I'd be more than happy to answer that question. It will have no impact. And in fact, it has a solar project that will benefit Boulder City.
So the fees that we, the residents each pay each month, that's a set fee? That's not going to go up with this agreement?
That's correct. The only thing that has an annual increase from the Southern Nevada Water Authority are our actual costs for water. So they can go up anywhere from 1.5% to 4% per year, depending on CPI.
Okay, and that charges to the city, which in turn, we could have to adjust our rate payments from the residents?
Potentially, although I don't see that in the next five years.
Okay, thank you. That was just for, I just wanted public knowledge to see how this affects. This is a plan. There was also a plan that was proposed for a Boulder City project for the effluent to be moved back to Henderson. And Mr. Porter, did you want to speak on why that one's?
I can tell you that it has been removed from the plan.
Those are the only items I just wanted to make everyone aware of, so thank you.
Thank you, and I had that same concern as well. And it was a question that I'd asked during my briefing yesterday about that line. It has been removed from the plan, according to them. I do plan to amend this resolution to be specific that what we are approving tonight is the plan that is included in our packet. Because this is a long-range plan and it is subject to changes over a period of time. And just that what we are looking at tonight is specifically what is in that plan, which does not involve that particular project from SNWA. Any other questions or comments? I guess one other item that was given to me during my briefing yesterday. This plan will result in increases in charges for connection fees in the valley for other entities, but not for Boulder City, is the information I was given. Was that?
That's correct. It will lead to increases in the connection charges, as well as the commodity charge, which we don't pay here in Boulder City.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I'll move for approval then of Resolution 7189. By amending the, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council approved Southern Nevada Water Authority's amended major construction and capital plan, attached hereto as Exhibit A. Anyone wishing to second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. We'll now move to item number four. Mr. Luttrell?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Keegan Luttrell, Public Works Director. Before you is item four, the Arizona feeder electrical project, asking for the project to be awarded. You'll notice that there is a Part A and Part B. It's one or the other. Part A is asking to award the entire project, which is two different bid schedules. The project consists of undergrounding the electrical along Arizona Way from, yeah, from Nevada to Cherry is the first portion, and then Cherry into Substation 1, which is a part of the Boulder City shops. In order to do Part A, we would ask that we could reallocate funding from the, where is it? The underground cable replacement project that's currently in the CIP, funded for $750,000. And working with the Utilities Director and the Electrical Supervisor, Mr. Poole. They have identified that project as not needing to move forward at this time, mostly because they have a substantial amount of wire already purchased and not needing to purchase that cable at this time. And then also, we would ask that we could use $150,000 from the utility fund to be able to award the entire project. If council is not comfortable with doing Part A, the entire project, we would ask that Part B, Resolution 7199, be approved. That is for the construction between Nevada Way and Cherry. The reason staff's recommending awarding the entire project is we feel this is a good bid price. It's $300,000 less than the second lowest bidder in talking with NARE Underground. The reason that their price is so competitive is they have the staff on hand. Where a lot of companies don't have the staff right now. They're losing staff to California and to the southeast for hurricanes. And they also believe that they are going to be able to get the project done under the contract time. So that's why their price is so competitive. Another reason that we would like to move forward with the entire project at this time is inflation and the economy of scale. If we award a smaller portion of the project and then come back next year or the year after, we're going to have to deal with construction costs going up. And also, it being a smaller project, prices tend to go up. And a third reason that we'd like to move forward is, according to the Electrical Master Plan, Substation 1, which is at the shops, and Substation 2 are going to be decommissioned in 2023. In order to move forward with that decommissioning, this project needs to be completed all the way over to Substation 1. That takes it from the 4 KV to the 12 KV and makes the system a lot more reliable. And then Part C is for construction management for the project. We have asked that Horox engineers be the construction manager. One of the reasons we had picked them, back in 2017, Public Works or Engineering Department did an RFQ for consultants. And Horox was one of two consultants selected to the shortlist that we could move forward on projects like this. And then the second, we also looked at SNWA's consultant list, and Horox is one of their top firms that they have used. Do you want to mention that the NRS that we had quoted for construction management, we had it as professional services, which is NRS 332. Our city attorney had pointed out that that should have been NRS 338, construction manager as agent. It doesn't change anything in terms of not competitively bidding for these construction management services. But it is a correction we wanted to point out. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. I guess I will just start by saying that personally, I think that moving forward with Resolution A, to do it, to bid it out all at once, I'm personally in favor for that. Just for consideration of what it might cost us down the line if we weren't to. Of course, I'm open to hearing other opinions. Just for clarification, this is just talking about Substation 1, right? Because I know it had been talked about Substation 2 also. And I think with its proximity to the school and once it's been taken offline, there might be opportunities for an education experience over there. But that's for another discussion. I just wanted to make sure and clarify that we're just talking about work at Substation 1. So that's the only comment I have right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I also, after looking at the numbers and the fact that money, the 1.156 came from earlier projects that were put together, combined in order to come up with that amount. And that the only amount coming out of the electric fund balance in total was $150,000.
Correct.
I also assume that if we did it in two parts, that the management costs could possibly go up also.
That is correct. We reached out to Horox and asked them if we were only to be able to award one half of the project, how much the reduced fee was. They didn't sit down and crunch the numbers, but they basically took their monthly rate and times it by the shorter duration of the project. Because one portion we're saying is 210 days, one's 270. NARE thinks that they're going to be able to be close to the 210 for the entire project. But yeah, they said $267,000 for just one portion versus the 343 for the entire project.
Okay, that's what I figured. And that's it. I just wanted to make sure. I figured that all the costs would go up if we wait and did it in two parts. And I'm curious also, is it paid in two parts? Is it, they do the first part and then they get paid and then the second part? Or is it all?
We'll have, it'll be under one PO, one purchase order. But we have two different sets of bid schedules for the project. And if they complete this much underground conduit on this part of the project and this much on this part of the project, we'll pay them whatever work they get complete. It's up to them on how they want to phase it. So knowing that they want to get in and get out, they're going to try to get everything done as quickly as possible. So we might be paying a little bit on both projects at the same time, depending on which staff.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Folda?
Thank you. Well, I agree with the sentiments that have been made so far, as far as cost savings. And it would be basically putting the residents through a seven-month project and then doing it again some other point. So the only concern that I have with going forward this project is the potential for the above-ground box, that's six-by-six size box of transmitter. I have a concern, I voiced this before, with having those in the residential area. They're rather large. And if there's a way that we could make that to smaller boxes or do something else, especially when you're in, we're doing the historic district, to kind of keep the beautification in the area. So I'm not sure. I'm sure that's got to be looked into by utility more, but that's just a concern going forward with this one project.
Yeah, it's definitely something that Mr. Porter and myself can work with, the electric supervisor and the construction company, and see if there's any ways to reduce the impact. I completely understand what you're saying.
And this will be bringing down some poles? Or because they will be undergrounding the line, is that correct?
Yep, we'll be undergrounding the line. There still will be some poles, because we have a lot of lines going down the alleys and stuff. But for the most part, everything's going to go below grade. There's going to be one new steel pole at the intersection right there at Nevada Way and Arizona, replacing an old pole. But we're taking underground as much as possible.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Adams, would you like to make the motion then on first resolution?
Sure. I move to approve Resolution number 7191.
Second.
Comment, Mayor, sorry.
Go ahead.
The DAS, there's an amendment to the resolution. If we could change the, there were four bids, there were eight bids instead of four. If we could make that amendment.
Send the Resolution 199 in the backup material. And the third, whereas, it says mistakenly four bids. So the change is to make it eight bids, which is the accurate number.
Yep, that's good.
Okay, anyone wishing to second the amendment?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And then we also need a decision on Resolution 7192.
Mayor, I will move to approve Resolution number 7192.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Luttrell.
Thank you.
And we'll move to item number five, Resolution 7193. Excuse me. We're moving to item number six. Recognition of Volunteers for Response During COVID-19 Pandemic. This item was requested by Councilmember Folda.
Sorry, I thought I had one more in between. Hold on. Thank you. In the beginning of the pandemic, we, through our emergency response, staff had asked for volunteers that could help respond to this crisis. We had, well, we have lots of nonprofit volunteers that stepped up and helped and worked with the EOC during this pandemic. And they in turn have their own volunteers that have helped out as well. Specifically for the city, we had 63 volunteers, sorry, 67 citizens that reached out and offered their services. And attached is the names of all those who have helped serve directly to the city. And I just wanted to make sure that we took a moment to recognize them. And although we're still in the midst of a pandemic and we may need those volunteers again, and I do want to acknowledge that many, many acts of service have been taken place in our community since the beginning of COVID and continue still. And this email, let's respond to that call from the city. And I commend all those that were able to help and give a hand to others, whether directly with the city or through the volunteer organizations that they work with, or even just checking on a neighbor. I think we have a really awesome community that looks out for each other. In fact, I was talking with one of the volunteers for tonight's committee commissions. And he said, when he moved to Boulder City recently, the first day he was there, the neighbor brought him a pie. And he just was shocked by that. Like that is what happened in movies, you know? And that's kind of what, I'm just so proud of Boulder City and the volunteers that we do have. And just want to acknowledge them. Staff has made the letter that's attached, and they'll be mailing it out to all the volunteers since we couldn't have them all fill this room tonight. So, and then if Michael had anything to say, he'd worked very closely with the EOC and these volunteer groups.
Thank you, Councilmember Folda. Just kind of echoing some of your comments. The community asked and our citizens responded, which really demonstrates the community spirit here in Boulder City. These volunteers really stepped up, including Councilmember Hoskins is one of those volunteers. We appreciate the work that they did, including participation in the donation drive. Helping out, lend a hand in the senior center. Delivering food and supplies to our residents who are homebound, who otherwise couldn't get to those supplies. Especially, as we all recall, the beginning of the pandemic, supplies were limited. And what's really tremendous about what the volunteers did for our community and goes back to what is great about Boulder City, is they reached out to every household in the community, called them, and asked how they were doing. And so it's that community spirit that I echo in your recognition of these volunteers and the many others that serve Boulder City.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, I would like to thank you for doing this. And I think that the best thing about Boulder City is you can always depend on, if you need help, the people are there for you. And volunteering has always been a very important part of my life. It helps your heart grow and your mind grow. And I do thank all the volunteers that participated. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Adams?
Thanks. Yeah, just to be brief, I'll just add that community pride and volunteerism has always been at the heart of what makes the city so great. And I think it just goes to show that together, we really can work to overcome the things that present themselves in front of us. So my mother was one of the ones who received a phone call and she was tickled by it. You know, it really meant a lot to her. She's someone who is, you know, has difficulty when we're all so social and we're being asked to not do that. And I know that meant a lot to her, just to receive just a simple phone call like that. So little acts of kindness like that really do go a long ways. And I think, like I said, it's at the heart of what makes Boulder City so strong. It's at the heart of what makes it so great.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, it's interesting. When we moved here eight years ago, someone mentioned to me that we were, Boulder City was listed in one of the top 10 cities in Family Circle Magazine to raise a family. And the number one reason was volunteer. And the number one reason was volunteerism, which is, it's amazing. I I I do think it's wonderful, the way that people here step up. I lived for 10 years in Scottsdale and barely knew our neighbors' names. And here you have people sitting down and making phone calls to people. I think that's wonderful. So I would like to thank everybody also.
And I'd just like to, you know, thank councilmember Folda for bringing this forward. You know, we've been at this now for nine months. We are starting to see, hopefully, a light at the end of the tunnel with the vaccines. But I I think we've been doing this so long, we kind of forget these people who have stepped up and done such a great job. Mr. Mays, I know you worked, Paul Sikora, getting places to store supplies and all of that. You know, I saw it at the senior center. The people, because people were not able to come in for lunch at the senior center any longer, there were drivers that brought that food to those people who could not come in for lunch. So again, it's, thank you for bringing it forward and and thank all those people who have stepped up in big ways and small ways. It makes this community what it is. All right, we will now move to item number seven, a presentation regarding early voting for the 2021 municipal primary and general elections. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. NRS 293C point 3561 requires the city clerk to inform the council of the sites selected as permanent and temporary polling locations for early voting and inform the council at a meeting. As you all know, it's always been City Hall as the early voting site for not only our municipal elections, but for the county and state elections as well. And this has become problematic. And during our last election, it was very problematic just because in the even numbered years, we have twice the voter turnout. And with the last presidential election, it was, as you saw, the lines were wrapped around the building. This building is just no longer suitable to conduct early voting here for numerous reasons. And so in consultation with our Parks and Rec Director, as well as our Public Works Director, we tried to just identify the place that made the most sense. And that would be a place that is centrally located, that we know has the technical capabilities to conduct an election that is one level, that there's sufficient parking, that it's ADA accessible, you know, none of, all of the things that this building is not. And so I have, so this year and in the years going forward, even when we transition, I talked to Joe Gloria, the Clark County Registrar of Voters, and Lorena, who is the assistant. And they've agreed to keep it consistent, so there's no voter confusion. But we're going to move our early voting site to the Parks and Rec new gym. That way, it's one level. Anybody who's in a wheelchair or or, you know, who has a disability, it's much easier access. And there's, there's no disruption and because they have another gym. And so I'm happy to answer any questions. The the regular vote centers for Election Day will remain the same. But Joe and Lorena were very supportive as well and said they would be happy to keep it consistent.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
I'd just like to thank you for taking that action because I think it'll make a big difference. I saw the lines during the election. I don't know how they got in here and how they got out, but we needed to change and thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Adams?
I'll just echo councilmember Hoskins thoughts. When I, when I was standing here in line, I thought, what were we thinking this year? But it's something I I kind of just saw the writing on the wall saying, I have a feeling that next time it likely won't be occurring here. And I think as our community continues to grow, it's, it's already is a familiar location. So I think any slight confusion that there might be because of its central location and being close to here, it will be easily accessible and found by anyone who still might be confused or didn't quite get the message. So I think this is a good move for the health and safety of our community.
I would just like to say as well, we've used the rec center gym for one of the vote centers. Obviously, Clark County Election Department has made significant improvements in the voting process over many years. What I would like to see is the number of early voting days expanded. We're at four and I think we've been at four for the last two or three election cycles. But if you look at the numbers prior to that, when we had more days, I don't recall if it was eight or 10 days of early voting, the number of people voting each day was a little bit lower, but the total number of people voting was higher. And I really think the government works best when the majority of citizens are allowed to participate by casting their vote. And would like to see if we can get that expanded to six or eight or 10 days rather than the four days. You know, I I did hear from one person, it was like, they said, well, they couldn't make it here for early voting. And it's like, well, you could mail it in, you could early vote, or you vote on Election Day. But it it works out that way for some people, that it's just not convenient for those four days. So I do think we should look at expanding that period of time. I do understand it costs more money. There are poll workers that obviously get paid for what they do. But I I think it's worth it to give our citizens the opportunity as much as we possibly can.
I'll be bringing forward a resolution declaring the election in January. And in the meantime, prior to that, I can discuss that with Joe and Lorena and, you know, make sure the gym is, you know, clear. But I do want to mention that, I I know we discuss this in briefings, but something to keep in mind is we will have to conduct this election under the guidelines of A B four, which means every Boulder City registered voter will receive a mail ballot, just like people received a mail ballot for the 2020 election due to COVID. So we will have, they'll, they will again have many, many opportunities to vote. We will have a drop box here for an extended period of time. And they'll have drop boxes at the early voting sites and in our office as they did during the 2020 election. So but we can certainly look into that and I'll keep you posted.
Thank you. And again, I know that, you know, for myself, it was like, so all I have to do is sit at home, fill out my ballot and bring it up and drop it in the box, or I can wait and take my chances and wait in a really long line. My ballot went in the drop box. But, you know, we have a lot of folks here in town that, you know, they like to get there in front of the machine and make sure that they see that their vote is recorded. And again, I I think that the more ways we can make it available for citizens to cast their vote, the better off government is. So thank you for checking into it. Councilmember Folda?
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to add my comment was that I grew up in a place where the voting center often changed from the firehouse to the school to a local church. So I appreciate that once it's moved, then that will be consistent because it is hard to find out where is it this year, you know? And it's good that we have that facility available to be able to control and use. And if they come here and air, it's right next door, so it will be easy to see the signs to where they actually need to to go. I had one question about the days that are chosen for early voting. I think, I don't recall until this last election, have seeing Sunday as an early vote day before. I don't know if that's been historically so or not, and I notice it's unproposed on this one as well.
We have had Sundays before and what I really try to do is keep it consistent with the county. And when we had early voting here for the presidential election, Sunday was available. So it's allowed under the statute. And if you do choose it, you have to keep it open for a certain number of hours, which of course is being proposed. And, you know, it's a, it's, it's, it's happened several times throughout history. And I did think about it. And sometimes it's a good day for people because, you know, on Saturdays, a lot of families in Boulder especially are out with, you know, at soccer or softball or baseball or whatever. And so, you know, we can see how it goes and and go from there, but it's always been an option.
Okay, thank you. I just, that kind of like stuck out to me when I saw the dates because I wasn't, it's not really usually a date that I would consider because mostly businesses and business type things are not open as much on Sunday. So if there's any stats from when this comes forward again in January, if there's the stats from how the turnout turned out on on the Sunday that we had.
Yeah, I can look back at history and send those to you.
And see what those were.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I was just trying to be consistent. They had it Thursday through Sunday, so I just tried to keep it Thursday through Sunday, just for cons, for consistency. But of course, we will be very active on social media and on our website, you know, sharing this information with the public. But I'll, I'll pull that information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, thank you, Madam City Clerk. And we will move now to item number eight, draft request for tract 350. Ms. Pelletier?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Agenda item number eight is for possible action, receive draft requests for information, also known as an R F I for tract 350 and direct staff as necessary. At the November 10th, 2020 council meeting, staff was directed to prepare a draft request for information for tract 350 for consideration by the city council for future action. So this is being brought to you tonight. We drafted a very basic R F I and we await refinement from the council.
Questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
Thank you, Mayor. After reviewing it, I I think that you actually covered everything that the council had asked you to do. During my briefing, I did ask that the map on page 102 was changed for the zoning scheme and that was done. We got a new map on that one. So just in case someone was looking online and didn't see that, that the zoning R 15, R 10 and R 7 was removed. So thank you very much.
Any others, questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. Yes, after our prior discussion, I know I personally received some comments and concerns regarding my support for smaller housing or housing that might be more attainable to newer families. Regarding the current zoning, that took place after the voters had voted on the the sale of tract 350, is that correct?
I think Michael might want to answer this one.
That is correct.
Thank you. And and I do think that this is a a good way, if we allow the developers to kind of show us what maybe they feel the market can kind of bear right now, to at least give us an idea. I like that this is an R F I because it's like we, it's a request for information, it's just that. And so I think it'll give us an idea of where we can go because there are a lot of problems that present itself at this tract. So I think this is a good first step in this process to see what will be right for Boulder City. And I think it's a, it's, it's a good because it's an open process. And so the community can weigh in as as things move forward so that they can give us their opinions on whether or not what they see is something that they would like to see in this community or not. So I I think this is a good first step.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I'm going to echo his comment about that. I did receive some feedback about concerns of people who live in the housing, in the houses on the other side of Bristol Cone, about multifamily apartments, condos, things like that. That they were concerned about what was going to end up across the street from where they live and the kind of, the kind of structures and the and the density. So I know that I, for myself, I think it's important to be mindful of that when we do receive R F Is and anything we choose to go forward with, the impact on 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 members of the neighborhood. That's it.
Councilmember Folda?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to say that I appreciate that it mentions the possible water line, the possible, the current zoning, but it's flexible or doesn't, no, the response isn't tied to the current zoning. And mentions our growth control ordinance and the, and the, that we need to stay within those bounds. The other thing I was wondering and about council feedback on this is, it doesn't mention our two story limit, which could be a consideration if they're proposing something, a taller structure or, you know, multi-unit family or condos that are three story high, which is common in the Las Vegas Valley. That would be kind of a restriction here in Boulder City at this time. And then just more specifically on the item itself, on the language, on our number, item number six, I just wanted to clarify maybe the language on how it's submitted. And I'm sure like we, like, it's been pointed out that people who respond to these know how to respond to them and stuff like that. But I just wanted to clarify some of the language that there's. It's asking basically for some metals to go through the in gym. And then also, if if that's not possible, then it would be handed in in person. But then that would also provide an electronic format. The way, a number six, and then again on page 100, under notes. I just want to maybe clarify that. So like on page 100, after note, it says.
Please submit one electronic copy.
Yes. So just, and that one's pretty clear, please submit one electronic copy. But it doesn't say where on that part. And then if submitting a hard copy, it does say a per, original and electronic copy are required. Whereas at the beginning, it's a little bit different. So maybe we can just be a little more redundant in how it's submitted to make that clear.
We can do that.
Okay. Otherwise, I think, you know, I think this is, I think this will be good for the council. I think when it comes to housing and where things go and what things should be, I think we kind of get stuck in like a look or how things should be. And if you, you have to know what the trends are as well, right? Because you could build something and then it sits vacant and not used and or things are not. I think, you know, we just kind of have a prejudice against certain housing types. And I think this will be good to kind of see what's out there. And, you know, of course, we can decide what goes into our own community. But I think people need to be a little bit open and not so much, I don't want anything like that next to my property. And I understand that it's a concern, right? Anytime someone buys property, that's development can happen next to it, they're concerned. And we should hear those concerns and take them under consideration as well. I think that was the only thing, just that clarifying language on the, on the paperwork itself. And then if council thinks that we should add the second story as well into that, I'd like to hear what council says.
Why don't we, I mean, since that's a solid idea, anyone opposed to including language, pointing out the master plan specification that we do not have above two stories in Boulder City?
I I support that, Mayor.
Anyone who opposes it? Any other suggestions, councilmember Folda?
No, Mayor.
A couple of things that have already been pointed out. On page 97, where it says the construction of underground flood control pipeline adjacent to the project along the eastern boundary will be required. I'm a little bit concerned about that wording. Even more concerned that whatever value we do get out of this project, if it it ever does sell, that the city may be footing. if it, it ever does sell, uh, that the city may be, uh, footing the bill for that. Um, it's a concern because I don't know that we have any cost estimates on that yet. And whether developers are gonna look at that and say, you know, I, I just can't make this work if I have to pay that price. So I don't know if, uh, how that might be worded, but say that, uh, you know, a flood control channel will be necessary, but whether it's going to be the responsibility of the developer, um, or how it may get financed. Uh, clearly on the other side of Bristlecone, uh, there was no requirement for that developer to do anything. They're just dumping their water out on the, on the Bristlecone. So I'm a little bit concerned about putting that in there in the format that it is, uh, that we may be scaring some developers away. So anyone, uh, opposed to changing that wording to just say that, um, an underground flood control pipeline adjacent to the project along the eastern boundary would be a good idea? Mr. Mays, I'll, I'll leave it up to you if you have any suggestions on some other wording that, uh, you know, may make it clear that we're willing to talk about that.
I, I think necessary is appropriate, Mayor. Again, because this is an RFI, the respondents know that they're not committing to certain obligations. What they're doing is responding to your quest for ideas of how to develop the property. We would anticipate that with a subsequent RFP, we can have greater details, provide certainty to the developers, understand their exploit, expectations and the city's obligations.
All right. I, I will be satisfied with that then. Um, I, I do think too that, you know, this whole piece of land, uh, became an issue because, uh, some time ago, uh, a golf course got built there. And that was not a terribly popular thing with many people in town. And that, uh, you know, the statement that was being made at that time was, uh, we're not building the golf course to sell land. Well, of course, the golf course was being built to sell land. So, you know, a lot of things are said about, oh, well, the golf course got paid for. Well, yes, it did get paid for, but, you know, what, what's happened with this land? Well, the land was originally approved for sale in 2010 and it has sat there. And it's been up for sale, I believe at least twice before. And there have been no responses, uh, for the sale. And I think that was the reason for Councilmember Hoskins to bring this forward again in a format of a request for information rather than a request for proposal, so that we do get some ideas coming from developers rather than saying it's gonna be this way or no way. Um, I've certainly seen many golf course communities, um, that are not cheap. Matter of fact, I don't think I've ever seen a golf course community that anybody would consider cheap. Um, so I agree with, uh, Councilmember Folder too, that, um, if the idea is that every house that gets built in Boulder City has to be a minimum of 3,000 square feet, um, that's not a very wise way to do things. So I understand there are concerns of people, but none of this is going to be written in stone. And the idea of this is to allow ideas to come in, get public comment, public input on it. Um, but to immediately say that if it's not a, uh, an extremely large home that's being built across the street there, somehow that's going to have a negative impact on other values. I, I just don't think that's borne out in the type of communities that are generally built around golf courses. Um, I wasn't sure, but I don't believe I saw a statement in here either about the fact that the golf course may not always be there.
I believe there is a statement. Isn't there a statement, Brock?
It was in the RFP.
Oh, okay. It was in the RFP. We can put that in there.
You know, again, I, I think that's something that, uh, i- it's been said that that was a concern of some developers, uh, when the RFP was done. But I think we also need to be forthright about that, um, that there is no guarantee the golf course would always be there. You know, there are immense legal battles occurring in the Las Vegas Valley right now with developments that have golf courses where developers have come in and said, no, we're gonna take the golf course out and put in more housing. So, again, I'll put that out there. I believe we need to say something about that. Uh, is there anyone in opposition to having that included in this RFI? Councilmember Folder?
I just don't want to scare away, um, bids either. I think that's kind of a given with, with golf courses. I don't know.
Well, that, that's actually been the basis though of these legal battles is the, the folks that either originally developed them or that purchased the homes there said, well, wait a minute, I wouldn't have done this had I known that. And I, I think if we don't say that, uh, and certainly there are no plans to do away with the golf course, but we don't know what's gonna happen in 10 or 20 or 30 years. Um, I, I, I'm assuming that it would be, if the land is sold, it would be in, uh, whatever contract is developed, uh, to not put it out there now, I think is unwise.
I, I, I just think that might be premature because this will also go out for an RFP. And I think in the RFP that we could do that right now, we're just seeking information. And I think it's kind of a given that, um, there's that risk of Boulder, you know, of golf courses going under or changing at some point. It's, it's been a trend across the country, but that's just my opinion at this point because we have to go through again and we'll do a formal RFP. And that will be much more detailed and have much more, um, layout of what we're looking for at that point.
Councilmember Hoskins?
I, I agree with, uh, Councilwoman Folder that I, I don't think we need to cross that bridge right now.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take that off then. Um, the other thing that I had a, a concern about, uh, with the way this is, is worded, is to have, uh, someone submitting ideas on what might be considered the choices pieces of land out there and leaving the less choice pieces of land for the city to figure out what to do with. And again, I, I know Councilmember Folder had suggested this, and I think that's a good idea because again, we want to get input. Uh, but I think that's something we need to be conscious of as the ideas come back. Um, are we being left with, you know, one or two or three white elephants that, you know, we, we can't do much with? We've talked about the flood channel that needs to be built. You know, how does that get paid for if someone's not purchasing the land all the way down Bristlecone? Uh, I think that's just something we need to be aware of, that as these proposals, or excuse me, I don't want to use the word proposals, as these informational suggestions come in, um, that we be aware of how the whole project would get built out over time. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
Since we brought up all these different items, I just, uh, I would like to ask Mr. Mays a question here on, um, where it says on page 97. Um, you know, I addressed the map, but it also says here that existing zoning for the parcel is a mixture of R1 through 15. Is this correct? That this statement correct?
Correct.
It is correct. Okay, thank you.
And I think that might be why it was referred to in the map, so people could see what they are.
Thank you.
Do you want, I guess we could remove that or leave that in there? Uh, I don't, you know, it's the council's, you just tried to bring back a basic template for council changes. And the other thing we would need is a date to, to, to put into the, we're, we're recommending February 25th if we go forward with this. We could have that be the due date for the RFI, but, um, council could, I think, change that date too.
Councilmember Bridges?
Um, I, I think the February, um, that February date sounds fine. To me, uh, February, what, 25th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And, uh, the other thing is, I was looking at page 97, it says R115 twice. It's supposed to be R115, R110, and R17?
I caught that.
You already caught that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Because that is the zoning for that. I mean, it doesn't have to be in the structure that it was laid out on, uh, on the document, but that is, okay. That's it. Thank you.
So back to your point, Councilmember Hoskins?
I think it's okay if, if, as long as Mr. Mays thinks it's okay, the way it's written.
We could add it back on the map.
No, I, I think it's fine either way. It's just factual information. The RFI makes it clear that the council is looking for options that, uh, don't necessarily follow the current zoning.
And I, I do think on the second bullet there, or the next bullet, um, it does list the other types of development. So, I, and again, I do agree with you that if we start plugging in those zoning classifications, that, that kind of says, well, it has to be one of these, but the other classifications aren't listed there. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Folder?
Thank you. I just, um, for the date, is that when it would be, um, received by?
Yes, that would be the submittal.
Okay. And then so how long do you, um, these RFIs typically run for? Um, how long are they posted for?
Usually I would think for about, I would say a month, but I'm not...
About that time. Okay.
Yeah, about that time.
Yeah. And I think that's, and it'll be out in the newspaper and, and there were several different agencies, I think, that we were going to...
Purchasing manager would, uh, make sure it's posted in all the places it needs to be posted.
Okay.
I wouldn't be shy about giving it 45 or 60 days.
It might be that because they, they allow time for questions and then he'll answer all the questions all at the same time and post the answers for everybody to see. So it might be a six week instead of four week.
Yeah, I, I think going a little longer than the 30 days for responses would probably be necessary for somebody really to put something thoughtful together. So do we want to state a time or, I'll say 60 days. Anyone have a problem with 60 days rather than 30 days?
I didn't, I think it's longer than 30, but it would be at least 30. And I think what, what this date was put in there for is knowing that if this is approved tonight to go forward, we could have it, you know, plenty of time to get it advertised out there and then get the responses.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Folder?
Uh, do we need to make a motion on any changes or, um, do you want to just go off what comments been thrown out there? Do you want a motion?
I think the only clarification I may need is on the R1s. Do you want us to leave those in or take those out? The, uh, zonings.
On the map?
Not on the map. We could put them back on the map or take them out of the...
I think they should be taken out of the, off the, leave them off the map like it was. And I actually think it should be taken out of the, the verbiage.
Okay, we can do that.
Yes. I think it makes it a little bit easier. We're just going out for information at this point in time. I, I, I think later...
The less restrictions probably, the better, more creativity you'll get.
And do we need a motion or can we, do we just say direct staff?
Well, let, let's finish that up. Any opposition to, um, that recommendation then of removing those R classifications? And to also removing them on the map? Okay. Before we talk about motions, um, from staff then, is there anything that we have not addressed or that's not yet been addressed that you need?
I don't believe so. Okay, we're good.
Okay. Madam City Clerk or City Attorney, what, what do you think? Have we expressed it well enough or do we need a, an official motion on those?
I, I think, I think, uh, I, to make it more clear, would, it would help to have the, a motion, um, just encompassing the changes. I believe one was Councilwoman Folder, the clarification that there is a, a restriction on over two stories. And then, uh, Councilwoman Hoskins for the removal of the zoning designations from the map and the body. I believe those are the only two changes.
And the respondent, the height of the, of the buildings, right?
Right. I, I believe Mr. Mays was keeping notes, so...
Yeah, we have the notes.
Perhaps Mr. Mays can put together the motion for us.
Let me just, um, repeat back what I heard from the council in direction that you had asked at each item if there was any objection. Everyone was in agreement with inclusion of the two-story limit. Everyone was, uh, in agreement in clarifying the form of submittal, uh, repeating that throughout the document, so that was clear. Um, everyone was in agreement that flood control, uh, improvements will be necessary, not required, and to remove the zoning references throughout the document and to the, uh, February 25th due date. I believe that captures all of the, uh, feedback that I had heard.
So moved? Anyone wishing to second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Thank you all. I, I know that sometimes this is the sausage making, but, uh, we'd like to get some good ideas on what to do with this so we can then get input from the public on it. All right. We will then move to, uh, item number nine, resolution number 7194, uh, consideration purchase of new cardiac monitors. Chief Gray?
Evening, Mayor and Council. So this item is to seek approval to purchase four new cardiac monitors for the fire department. Our current monitors were manufactured in April of 2007, but they were purchased by the city, um, in, as refurbished units in July of 16. Uh, the American Hospital Association recommends a five-year replacement from manufacturer. So we're about 13 years into that. Um, the city and, and all fire departments around the country and hospitals received a letter from the FDA on September 26, 2019, stating that any cardiac monitor devices that aren't FDA-approved will no longer be supported after February 3rd of 2021. So that's coming up in a couple months. Um, our cardiac monitors are not FDA-approved. And so, um, what that means basically is they would no longer be supported. They're no longer gonna be able, the manufacturers aren't gonna be allowed to make the parts for them anymore. And so that becomes a big deal because these have to be calibrated devices. Um, so, um, we received three quotes on the monitors. We went through a scoring process. We picked the lowest quote, which fortunately was also the most technologically advanced and newest monitors. Um, so some of the things these new monitors allow us to do weren't allowed in the past. One of the big, but if it's really when you look at the FDA approval process is, part of what makes our other monitors a problem is the defibrillator, the part that shocks you is built into the monitor. The new ones that are coming out, they're separate. So if there's any future changes, it's just a piece. You can just replace the piece. Um, some other things that they allow you to do is they allow you to do video, um, innovations. So you can stick a tube into someone's lung using a camera and not have to, the way it works, the way I, I did it for years and the way it works today is you have to get right in their face and actually visually look down their throat and put it in there. So this is a lot safer, especially in the world of COVID and respiratory diseases. Um, these new monitors also allow ultrasound, which is something new that's coming out, which is just a big, a big progress in, in, in paramedicine. So, um, the total cost for the project came in at 145, 511, and the approved CIP funding was 150,000. So we're just a little bit under the funding. Uh, we were contacted by the bidder that, the, the best quote of this week. And he said, if we could get an, uh, order in this week, there's another department in the valley that's ordering and they could, they believe they could have them here by the end of the month, which is really fast because what we originally told 60 days. So, and I'm happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
He answered all my questions already, so.
There you go. Anyone wishing to make a motion then on, uh, resolution 7194?
Yes, um, I would like to move that we, uh, approve resolution number 7194.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Chief Gray.
Thank you for the support.
Uh, we'll now move to item number 10, uh, matters pertaining to ballot questions for the 2021 municipal general election.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Brittany Walker for the recording.
Brittany Walker for the recording. The ballot questions before you are proposed for the two thousand and twenty-one municipal general election occurring in June. There are four total. The first three have to do with, uh, funding options for an aquatic center. Earlier this year, the pool ad hoc committee met and had discussed, uh, prior versions of these ballot questions that were presented to council in February and, uh, recommended that the city attorney draft the valid questions for the upcoming municipal election with a, uh, clarification on the funding source, uh, within the capital improvement fund. And the questions before you today attempt to do that, um, both in, with some in the actual question and some within the explanation. For the first question, there are three options for the pool. The first is, uh, ask the voters if the city should approve seven million dollars, uh, towards an aquatic center, um, as an expenditure from the capital improvement fund. And in that question, that makes it clear that the capital improvement fund is funded with proceeds from the sale and lease of city lands, including, uh, some proceeds from solar leases. Generally, we try to keep these questions very brief, uh, to avoid confusion. So, we would recommend to council today, if they move forward with the ballot questions, that, um, the, uh, language explaining where the fund, uh, what is, what the, um, money comes from, it would actually be removed from the question and instead just included in the explanation and digest for clarity. Uh, but that's up to council and is a matter for discussion before you today. I also wanted to mention with the pool questions, uh, it came up during our briefings that there was some concern that, uh, an aquatic center, if, uh, there wasn't a clear, uh, amount that an aquatic center will cost of the city, um, there not a concrete number for that at this time. I do want to point out that, given the limits on the capital improvement fund and that any expenditure has to be approved by the voters, uh, this, if all questions are approved, allows, uh, pretty much sets forth like a, a budget. You know, the voters will have approved a, this certain amount, and that money would be available for an aquatic center. And the, the ballot questions are, uh, drafted, um, broadly, so that an aquatic center could be a new aquatic center, or it could be, um, you know, remodeling the existing aquatic center. Uh, and so, if the voters approve this, this would allow that, those funds to be available from the capital improvement fund, so that the city could pursue either option, um. So, in, in continuing the discussion, the second ballot question would appropriate a million dollars annually from the capital improvement fund, um, and that would sunset either in December two thousand and twenty-nine or, uh, when the aquatic center is completed, so a maximum of, um, I believe, eight million dollars. And then the third ballot question, uh, redirects funds from the, uh, sale of Track three fifty, when that question was approved by the voters in two thousand and ten, those funds were, uh, dedicated towards the municipal bonds that were taken out for the Boulder City, uh, for the Boulder Creek Golf Club. Those bonds have since been paid off, they were paid off in two thousand and fifteen, so this would redirect ninety percent of the proceeds of the sale of Track three fifty towards an aquatic center. I think we, I, council should probably discuss the first three before moving on to the fourth one.
I agree. Uh, and, and I would just offer a couple of observations. Um, we still do have debt, and I don't believe the ballot question previously was targeted towards the debt incurred from the construction of the Boulder Creek Golf Course. Um, I think it was just debt.
The question referred both to the bonds with the, with the Boulder Creek Golf Course and other capital debt, so it was both.
Right.
Yes, that's correct.
And, and we do have other debt that's still outstanding, uh, with the raw water project.
Okay, yes.
Okay, so that, that's one. The other is, I, I know many of the comments that I received from people, um, and, and the reason they told me they were going to vote against these questions was, one, there was nothing specific as to where the aquatic center would be built, and two, without knowing how much it was going to cost, because it was an overall forty-million-dollar price tag that was being put on it, which a lot of folks felt that was just simply too much money. So, I'll open it up to council, but I think we need to be very conscious of those things that I believe were instrumental in defeating these questions the last time around, or at least the, the bond issue, and of course, at that time, it was going to result in a property tax increase for people, whereas the way this has been structured, uh, there would be no tax increase, uh, involved with these questions. But the answer to the questions about how much is it going to cost and where is it going to be built, uh, those were certainly what I feel were instrumental in defeating the previous question on this. The pool committee, there is an ad hoc pool committee that is working, uh, and hopes to have some answers, probably within the next sixty days, as far as whether a replacement pool is required, and if it is, what the cost of it might be. Uh, and with that, I'll open it up to any other questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, uh, thank you. But I don't see how we can put any dollar amount at this time on anything, and we really don't know if it's going to be renovation of the old facility or a new facility, correct?
A recommendation from the pool committee is not ready yet. Um, the, you know, this council has already approved an evaluation and an estimate to be done, uh, and that is in progress. I don't want to make this, Mr. Luttrell run up here, but, um, he thinks that, you know, within the next sixty days, we may not have a complete estimate on it, but we should have an idea of whether replacement is going to be the better way to go, or whether it can be repaired.
So, if we vote on this, this evening, and we don't have that dollar amount, are you wanting to wait for that dollar amount to come before we vote on it?
Well, again, I believe we can hold these, uh, questions in abeyance for right now, and let's see what the, uh, pool committee comes back with. Again, uh, Madam City Attorney has said that, you know, we can go ahead and do this. I'm just relating what my experience was with the voters, and what I absolutely don't want to see us do is put these questions out there again and have it be defeated and then have to wait, you know, and, and special elections can be called, um, but the feedback that I received from voters was, if they don't know what it is, they're not going to vote for it.
I totally agree with you. That was what, most of the concern was when we sat out in front of the Boulder Dam Credit Union.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to agree that, uh, without a, at least a range and, and some idea of cost, and whether or not it would be replacement or repair, and also location, that I'm not sure that many minds are going to change, and there's still numbers reverberating from the last time we discussed this issue. Also, with outnumbers, I found that one day it's twenty-five, and then somebody says thirty-two, and then you're talking forty million dollars, and to have something on paper that, that sets a range or a cost, uh, is going to definitely make it easier for people to make a decision. This is, I'm, I'm not sure these are, would pass in the current, um, in their current state.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Folda?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, uh, I tried to look at these like I didn't know anything that was going on or the past history of anything, and, um, yeah, I'd probably vote no on all, too, unless I know the history, right? Because previously, when the pool ballots went forward, right, we were asking forty million dollars, and we don't know what we're building yet, and we had a concept design, and we didn't know where it was going to go. And that's, you know, a lot of money, and it would cost a property tax, and it would cost people to pay for that, and a lot of comments I heard were, you know, there's not enough citizens that use it versus having everyone pay for it, that kind of things were going on. So, um, if you look at the way these are now, um, we're not increasing any property, um, we're using money that we already have. Much of this money is coming from the solar leases that goes into our capital improvement fund. We have the seven million already in, and available, and then the million would transfer as we receive. So, and I think that we're being very conservative, at least the ad hoc committee is working on being very conservative with the amount that they, total amount that it will be. And then, it, kind of same for the next one that we're not talking about yet, but for the tract. What I would, um, so I say it's a huge improvement from the ballot questions that were seen before, but I think that the city council and the ad hoc committee and any other people who are invested in these questions need to make sure that clarifying things go out there, because once you read the explanation digest, it's very clear what's going on. But if you just read the ballot question, you can, you know, wah, what's going on? So, um, I think it would be up to those who are invested in, in this going forward, um, to update that facility that has been neglected for so long, um, to make sure that the, that the community understands and knows what's going on. I think that's the responsibility that we would have to have, um, in order for those to, to pass and get this, um, this, our poor pool from being so, um, to be fixed. One, we're either, if we're, um, having to do a new facility or upgrading and fixing the facility that we have, um, I think we all have a responsibility to make sure that it's clear what, what we're asking.
Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. Um, as, as serving on the pool ad hoc committee, I know that everyone on that board, uh, very much takes into consideration the, uh, type of pool that this community, uh, not only desires, but also can support, you know? That's, that's the big balancing act, um, whether that's a new pool or, uh, reconstructed or repaired pool, you know, that is something that we are still looking at. I'm confident that, uh, you know, I don't know whether prior to when these have to be finalized to, to go out, um, to the, uh, state and for, for approval and everything, or for confirmation of the questions, but I am pretty confident that at least by the time these questions are there, we will have some of those answers. Now, like I said, I don't know if that's in time to have that represented in the question. So, there are, there are, it, it's, it's difficult. We're at a difficult point right now, because the longer we wait, the, the more likely we're going to need to, uh, address that, you know, soon, it's kind of, you know, there is a little bit of a time crunch, but we shouldn't make decisions under duress, uh, because of the timetable. I, I did have some questions. Question one, it has just the legalese of it, you know, and I'm just a layman reading this, and it says, including without limitation, solar leases. Now, I understand what it is trying to say, but it does give that, that imperson, the, the impression that, without limitation, we can, you know, whatever the money's there, we'll just use it however we like. Could you kind of talk about that?
Absolutely, yeah, and that's part of the reason why we recommend not including it in the actual question, is because, you know, we have to be legally accurate in, in what we're, how we're describing what's included in the fund. And so, I mean, the fund doesn't just include solar lease revenue, I mean, that's a portion of what the fund includes, but it's, you know, proceeds from all the sale and lease of city land, so, um, it, the, I mean, to be legally correct, we have to say including without limitation solar leases, but again, having that in the question says, wait a minute, are we proving funds for an aquatic center or a solar lease? It just becomes confusing, so that's why we do recommend having it in the explanation rather than the question, um, but we, I definitely understand the, the need for the clarification that, that solar lease revenue does, does fund, um, some of this, this account.
I think that's all my comments and questions right now.
And, and I would point out, too, that, um, you know, the capital improvement money, the seven million dollars, um, is in the fund now. The other money, the transfer of a million dollars each year, isn't dependent on, but would likely come as new money comes in, that transfer would occur, and of course, the third leg of the financing is the money from the sale of Track three fifty, which is not a certainty at this point, so. Councilmember Folda?
Thank you. I had one other that I forgot to state, um, for, um, ballot question number two, the sunset date. I think we thought of a ten-year date originally, because we started this in two thousand and nineteen, and I'm not sure if that's right, but if, I would propose changing it to, um, twenty thirty-one, because by next year, it'll be twenty-one, and that would give it a ten-year sunset.
Madam City Attorney, would it be possible to word that for a term like ten years?
Sure, yeah, you, well, yeah, I think you could do, um, you know, upon passage and approval, when, you know, when the, ten years after passage and approval or something like, but something along those lines.
Would that suffice for what you're getting at?
Yeah, either way, either that or a ten-year date. I just think that date originally became that date because of when we first, um, had these considered, because as you, everyone recalls, we were considering this for the, um, election we just had, and because we didn't have the information we needed, because all those delays we had with COVID that we didn't put on the election. So, I think just kind of updating that date to the current year when we have the election, and that could be, you know, whatever is legal, either the date itself of thirty-one or, um, ten years.
And at least then, I think the voters would know for certain, we're talking about no more than ten million dollars during that period. Any other questions or comments? Well, I will move then to hold in abeyance resolutions seventy-one ninety-five, seventy-one ninety-six, and seventy-one ninety-seven until the January twenty-sixth council meeting, two thousand and twenty-one. That would give us at least two more pool committee meetings to be conducted. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we'll move then to the other ballot question, uh, which is resolution seventy-one ninety-eight, uh, placing a question, an advisory question on the ballot, uh, requesting voter input on the imposition of a franchise fee. Madam City Attorney, did you have any further explanation that you wanted to offer on that?
Yes, only that this, uh, item came, uh, during the, was, was a, requested by you mayor at the November tenth council meeting, uh, the city, uh, a city consultant, uh, conducted a utility cost of service and rate study. An option presented out of that study for the council was the option to impose a franchise fee upon the utility, uh, which would essentially, uh, compensate the general fund for the utility's use of the city's rights of way. Um, similar fees are imposed in other jurisdictions, such as the city of Las Vegas and city of Henderson. Uh, the state law does limit such a fee to at most five percent. So, the advise, the question is advisory in nature, and if passed, would advise and encourage the council to adopt a franchise fee, not to exceed five percent. Uh, if the measure fails, it would advise the council to never adopt a franchise fee.
And again, I had requested this after, uh, seeing what was in the rate study that is currently being done, and, and also the, uh, some suggestions of this. I, I think it's important to understand what this means. There are other utilities here in Boulder City, uh, Southwest Gas, Century Link, Cox Communications, uh, and they are charged franchise fees for the use of city land. The difference, I think, is the citizens of Boulder City collectively own the utility here. So, what we would be asking is the citizens to pay this fee and then transfer it into the general fund, uh, from the utility fund. Um, it, to me, that makes. Um, it, to me, that makes no sense whatsoever. Um, all we're really doing is saying to the citizens, allow us to impose this fee on you. Um, since it's being transferred out of the utility fund into the general fund, it's not being used to benefit the utilities. It's not being used to improve them. It's not being used to reduce rates. It's not being used to do any of those things. It's simply a fee that would be imposed that would require citizens to pay some amount of money, um, that just goes into the general fund. Uh, there doesn't appear to be a need for it financially. Uh, I don't see where asking a citizen to pay something that we then transfer somewhere else makes much sense. I do understand it's in the rate report, but it's not having an impact on what the rates are. It's simply, here's a way you can raise some money. And I just think that if we're going to do that, we should be honest with the citizens about what we're doing. Um, if we need to raise more money, you know, there are other ways to do that without imposing yet another fee on people, uh, especially where it's being done by a municipally owned utility. Uh, so again, questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
Uh, Mayor, I totally agree with you on that. Um, we need to raise money. We can raise it another way, but we don't need to be charging our citizens a franchise fee.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Fuldah?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, um, this, uh, for this ballot question, um, because we're also talking concurrently about, um, looking at, uh, RFI for the sale of the land. And, um, you know, there's that concern and it's bringing that up of what's going to go there with things like that. I don't want this question to be confused with asking them, can we sell that land? Because it's already been approved. So, um, I just wanted to see if we could add, um, to the proceeds from the sale of land, to, um, the proceeds from the voter approved sale of land. Um, I don't know if that's even clarifying or not, but somehow to state that that's already been approved. I know it's in the explanation later on. Um, I don't know. I just want to get counsel's thought of that because I, I have a concern when I first read it that we're asking, I don't want voters to be confused that we're asking again, can we sell this land? But we're actually just asking for a change in the way that the proceeds would go for funding.
Um, I think that, yeah, for the sale of track three fifty, I definitely, I'll make those notes, I think, for, for those items in the future. Um, when we bring those back to council in January, I'll make those notations for the, for that sale. Uh, yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, Adams?
Yeah, I'll just say, you know, at first I wasn't really sure, you know, how necessary this was because I have a feeling I know how the voters will vote. But I, I do also think that it is a good way to, uh, explain kind of what this concept is so that people can actually see, get an understanding for how, uh, different utilities look at their things, how we, how one consideration is, uh, whether or not the citizens think that it is appropriate uh, for our, our community to, uh, to look at, uh, this type of, of funding source. Um, so I do think it actually does have some merit. Like I said, I wasn't too certain at first that it, that it was necessary, but I do think that it does provide a benefit to the council to, um, get feedback, uh, with something like this from the citizens.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I brought this up during the briefing and, um, I just want to make sure in terms of structurally of the ballot, if this is ballot item number four, what I'm reading is A, this is about funding the pool. B, this is about funding the pool. C, this is about funding the pool. And D, this has nothing to do with funding the pool. And I'd want to make sure structurally that this, it's not assumed or read into that this might have anything to do with funding the pool. And I, I don't know whether there is a mechanism to do that, but, um, because we're talking about finances and funding, it might be easy for somebody to think that all four items have to do with the pool. So that's, uh, that was a comment that I had.
Yes, I, I think that the, um, that, that is a risk, uh, if, if all four questions are, are on there that, that, that voters may assume the, the fee is, um, for the pool in the, in the question itself and in the explanation digest, it, it makes it very clear that it's, that it's for, um, you know, for the utility. Um, so, and, and then the fiscal impact, it's, it's clear the franchise fee would, uh, be used for the general fund. Uh, so I, I don't know what really additional changes we could make, um.
And it's also per our code, we have to list the questions in a certain order on the ballot. Um, and capital improvement fund questions are first. And as the city attorney identified these questions on ballot question four, it's clearly marked as an advisory question. And the other questions will be clearly identified as capital improvement questions, capital improvement fund questions. I don't know if that helps, but in addition to the explanation, uh, the arguments and rebuttals will be in there, and I think that will help provide clarification.
And to add as well, because this is an advisory question, even if the voters approved it, there is no requirement that the council actually impose a franchise fee.
And, and I would point out, you know, th- this town of many, uh, other examples, uh, folks like to vote on things. Folks like to tell us at the ballot box what they want. And I, I think this is the type of thing that, uh, because it has come up, uh, that we need to have the voter input on this and have that clarified exactly what this fee does. And I would also remind all members of the council, you know, we, we still have time. If there are other ballot questions that are desired, um, there's still an opportunity uh, for those to be suggested and, and discussed. Um, Madam City Clerk, I believe you had said, was it end of March? That these are due to the county election department?
Um, mid-April, uh, sixty days in advance of the general, so the general this year's June fifteenth.
Okay. So don't wait. Well, I will, uh, make a motion then, if there's no other discussion for approval of Resolution seventy-one ninety-eight, to place this advisory question on the ballot.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we will move then to item number eleven. Uh, discussion and possible staff directive regarding policies for the email system. And I'm not sure who would like to make the presentation. Madam City Clerk?
Well, Mayor, this was at your request, and this was as a result of, um, the council's emails auto deleting in Outlook system after a hundred and eighty days. And, um, some concern about how you can keep your emails. And so after briefing yesterday, we talked and I, um, we set it up that way based on, you know, internally, based on recommendations from the state, the Nevada, um, library and archives. Or, why am I missing that name? Um, the Nevada?
State Library and Archives.
State Library and Archives, I was missing a word. I knew it was at NSLA. Um, based on their recommendation, and so becau-, um, and I know you all have different types of laptops and, and iPads and everything. And so this is really kind of something new for us as well, not, not archiving our emails. But you know, we, you, you can save your emails as long as you want, just not on the Outlook server. So, um, I tried to answer any concerns at the last meeting and provide additional information. And so with respect to the council's emails, if you want to keep your emails longer, we can certainly set that up for you. And because the council's records, you as a council, as a body, don't have a records retention policy for the council because all your records come through as the public body and they're permanent and they are stored in our public records repository. Your emails would be considered general correspondence, and the retention period on general correspondence is one year. So if you would like us to change your email retention default period to one year, we can certainly do that. And in addition to that, we're at a place now, based on the improvements to our system. You know, we've recently gone to office three sixty-five, um, where, you know, we're in VOA. Um, we've upgraded our system and we have much more capabilities than we did even a year ago. So we're looking, coming this next budget year into an e- email archive system. And, um, and staff IT is putting together, um, training for council members as to how to store your emails if you want to keep them off of the system. And we can certainly look into products, um, for you. But i- in general, it's very important just to understand that emails in and of themselves are not records. It's the content of the email. And mostly we use it for a communication tool, and that's where everybody's going. So it is a practice recommended by all professional agencies across the country and our state, which regulates our records retention, that they are auto, they are kept off of that system. And so that's why that policy was put in place seven years ago. And, um, other than that, I, I, I'm just happy to answer any questions or provide any further clarification. But we will be coming forward with, um, some options for email, email archiving. And what that can do, uh, is it makes it, uh, it makes it more efficient and effective, like if we have a legal hold, we can, you know, shut down the entire system rather than every, you know, just send it, you know, before I, I'll have to send out an email. So we're at that place where we're ready to go to the next step. But I'm happy to answer any questions, um, that the council has.
Questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
Well, unfortunately, I didn't realize this was just concerning, uh, council emails. So my remarks are based on all emails.
I would comment away.
All right, uh, well, I'm impressed that both the city clerk and the city, um, assistant city clerk have the highest ratings. And I'd like to congratulate Tammy for her latest achievements. Uh, the retention time of six months, as far as I'm concerned, is not adequate. I've never seen any governmental, uh, documents with a six months retention. Under the background, um, number two, bullet number two and number six, the statement is not a record type, but a means of transmitting information different from the RMP Guidelines for Developing a Policy for Managing Email Bulletins. And yet, under three point two of that manual, it references examples of official email records and gives those examples. The Guidelines for Developing a Policy for Managing Emails, bulletin number one, twenty eleven, is almost ten years old. We all know things have changed in the past ten years, especially for emails. It changes almost daily. I think we should be archiving and then possibly deleting. As stated on page two thirty-two of our packet, VC three says Boulder City is the only client that has established an automatic rule to delete emails off the server after a certain period of time. All other cities archive every single email. If VC three states we are the only clients who have established a policy, then should we have chosen an automatic delete? Um, I recommend that the city attorney and the city manager review the policy and provide input on whether the policy is adequate and if there are more current reference materials available. We must consider possible legal actions and ensure we have the documents to support the city. Storage space has gone down in price dramatically in the past ten years, and we should be able to get a government discount. After research, researching this item, I find that usually a cloud agreement is charged per user. Office three sixty-five offers and what they call an input place archiving, which is just an additional few dollars per month per user usage. This added feature may solve this issue. It may be wise to review the users you know who would not need to archive or delete and not implement that feature. Thank you.
Can I, can I just respond to a couple of those? The, the response to the, the VC three response that they don't have other clients doing that is a compliment to Boulder City that we are ahead of the game. And with respect, because it is a recommended practice, the state's recommendation is to auto delete after thirty, sixty or ninety days, the shorter the better. I did consult with the city attorney, um, when I wrote the report, and she has worked extensively on records retention as well with the RTC. And then, um, with respect to other government entities, the Nevada State Library and Archives organization is what we as records administrators look to. And although their document is ten years old, that is the latest document they've published. And it's, it's relevant because nothing has changed with regard to retention of emails because they are not necessarily a record. They are, um, uh, a way to communicate. You have to evaluate whether or not it has a, a retention period. And then, um, with respect to other governments, again, Boulder City is kind of the, um, ex- leading by example because the only other entity that I know of that's put one in place, even though they are where they have to, is the city of Henderson. And theirs is longer. They have a, um, a one year, or no, they have fifteen months. North Las Vegas is recommending sixty days. And, um, this is a, as far as our internal emails, this is something we've had in place for seven years and it's, it's not an issue, and we deal with hundreds of emails a day. So, um, by retaining them longer on the server, it creates risk. And furthermore, it, it, um, is a problem because when we have to respond to public records requests, we have to dig through hundreds and hundreds of documents, even on a six month retention period. To give an example, one records request we recently received requesting emails for six months took twenty hours of staff time. So if you have a, an employee who is not properly, um, archiving their emails or putting them in folders that pertain to the records retention period, extending it a year is only going to exacerbate a problem that you already have. So the retention, um, the records retention policy is an administrative policy. And so as if, if the council wants to keep their emails, we can certainly, um, accommodate, accommodate that. Um, but with respect to our records retention, that is administrative.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Fuldah?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to say, you know, I, you know, I see both sides, you know, I see how, um, staff would use their email system. Um, and I think that council uses it slightly different because
I agree.
we don't have an office or a file folder that we're, or a printer even, or even a place to sit and print usually. Um, you know, we're always kind of on the go. And so, uh, for me, I like to have it for reference. Um, and definitely things that we were dealing with in July would almost, are, are to be deleted at this time. And those things are still pending and, and active now. And so to have them deleted makes it hard to reference anything new. And then on top of that, with COVID, uh, you know, I finally got, I think, handle a little bit on the amount of emails that we receive. And then COVID happened and anything that I was looking at got completely buried by all the different agencies um, giving COVID information and just hundreds of emails a week. Um, and so, yeah, I found emails like three months later, oh, hi, sorry, you were buried somewhere. Um, you know, I'm getting back to you now. And so you just, the time consuming amount of emails that we receive, um, and then that, and then that emails that we have are still active in the communications and things that we're dealing with. I just, I would like to see a longer timeframe that we could retain those. Um, and then storage space is an issue. And then storage space is an issue as well, because I, I download all the agendas, it's easier to, it's different than just pulling it up live, because I can actually skip to each item when I do download. And so, you know, having everything on here just makes it extremely slow. So there needs to be some sort of balance where we can retain our information that we're still constantly using and able to refer to, not overload our storage, and not have to print out 600-page packets. So, you know, to, you know, to free up storage. So I think there's kind of, you know, a balance hopefully between what staff's needs are and councils.
And we, I, I agree, Councilmember Folda. I mean, for council, what we have works for us, and I can clearly see that it's not, it wasn't always the case that council, A, had their own laptops, and B, used our email address. Some, you know, prior to this council, people had their own. And so this is an issue, and we see that. We could even set your retention for your emails for the entire term you're in office, and in the meantime, provide you training and tools to be able to search your emails, to give you products, to move them off of the server if you wanted, or, or keep them on, and just set the retention for when the term ends and, and go from there. It's not a, we don't, just because the council wants to save theirs, it doesn't have to be the same for us. So we will do whatever you wish for your emails, to make it work for you to be able to serve the community and do your jobs. And we will provide training, Ben's working on a how-to right now, and of course, we have records training. But like you said, Councilmember Folda, you know, it's, it's different. We, you know, you're the policymakers and we do the day-to-day, so I understand what you're saying. Most of your information is via email. So I, I, I know what you're saying. We can do, for your emails, whatever you would like.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. I, I, an, an ignorance with Councilwoman Folda, I, I definitely think that at least for, for city council and, you know, perhaps senior staff, you know, I already know that a lot of, of senior staff is already archiving a lot, and because they understand the records retention policy and the difference between what is a public records and not. But at least having a year, at least for me, would be certainly welcome, because like Member Folda said, you go in and then all of a sudden, you're trying to recall that memo you got or that, that other packet of information, and it's no longer there, and you kind of, you, you didn't think to, to archive it because you kind of just had it for reference before. But also, email shouldn't necessarily be used as, you know, as far as good policy goes, shouldn't be your records retention where you're saving everything, because that's not necessarily what email is. But we do use our email very differently, like, like Ben said, it's kind of our office. It is our office.
Right.
So that's, that's kind of where I'm at. I know you had mentioned concern for risk or liability to the city. I was wondering if the city attorney could kind of talk to that?
Yeah, absolutely. Email, again, yeah, is not, is not a category of public records. So whether the content of an email is a public record depends on what it is. And so, you know, there is a, you know, there shouldn't be a incentive to store public records within email. It should be, staff should definitely have processes to move anything that is a public record to a more permanent format that's not email. So there, that, that's the, the delicate balance to strike, is that when there is no retention period or the retention period's too long, staff tends to start relying on email as their storage mechanism when the, when the records should be sorted and moved off to a more permanent storage place. And when public records requests are, are, are submitted, it can be burdensome if there are, again, if, if emails used as the storage mechanism, that can be burdensome. And, and the longer the retention period, the more emails you would produce, and that would, because if we have the record, we produce it. So, you know, that takes staff time, it takes, it's really the, not so much the storage capacity or whether we have that space, but it's, it's the staff time and responding to records requests, and, and that can, you know, there are stringent requirements that we have to meet within NRS 239 when we respond to those. So if we don't meet those deadlines and things like that, we, there are certain penalties and things like that. So that, those are the main concerns.
I think that's all I have for right now.
Anyone else? Councilmember Bridges?
I'm, I guess I'm not so interested in the, in the length of time to keep emails. As long as I knew exactly how to archive them and not have them deleted, because there are times I want to go back to a conversation or an issue, and I know I could come to you, and I, I could do that. I know how to do it on my big computer. That's very easy. I can set up folders, and I can move the emails into those folders, and they, they'll be off the server. But on a iPad or something like that, it's virtually impossible to do the same thing. So the kind of training you're talking about and, and just a help document would, would be great. I mean, I'd love to, to see them last a year, but I think going on to the, the four years or three years and six months or whatever the length of the, our terms are.
Well, that's what we do in-house, is we drag and drop into the appropriate folders related to the record. And so I understand the issue, being a council member, you'd have to set up folders, and I know, I think some of you are very, well, I know a couple of you are very, very organized, and, you know, create the folders, like maybe it's committees and commissions, and then you make your little folders underneath that, and you drag and drop those appropriately, or you do a file save as. We can certainly provide that training, and we can certainly set your default email to whatever the council would prefer. And we were, we are always happy to help with, you know, if you need to come in and, and show, show us how you have it set up, or you need to talk to Ben, or, or any of us, we're always happy to assist.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I, I guess I want to clear one thing up, and that is that, you know, as far as any policy is concerned, it's really the NRS that determines what we are required to do. And as long as we are meeting the NRS requirements, if we're going beyond what the NRS says, I, I don't believe there's a prohibition against that.
No, there's not.
Okay. You know, I, I know in other environments, which were not governmental, but still controlled by things like, you know, Sarbanes-Oxley Act and, and other government regulations, you know, there are specifications on how long things must be retained, but I don't know that I've ever seen one where it said it had to be deleted, destroyed, whatever, by a particular date.
That is correct, Mayor. Our retention periods are minimum. But with that being said, the reason we do destroy them is because we have to have the ability to show that we are regularly, we are regularly enforcing our email retention policy because, and show its intent and for any, you know, just to mitigate any risk. We have to show that it's a structured, organized, consistent process.
Oh, I, I absolutely understand that once you establish a policy, that it needs to apply. And while we may have other concerns about things, I don't see how we should really have a different policy. But if there are other ways of saving records that we can refer to, that would be fine. But I think, as some members have already pointed out, we don't have the same type of capabilities that other city employees have. So we can rely on our own equipment, we can rely on functions that we may be familiar with and other formats, but I don't know that that's complying with the NRS either. So to say that we need a policy, well, it should apply to us as well. We can't just make up our own and then have, you know, you answer a public records request by saying, well, here's our policy, and yet, we, we don't work that same way. So I think something has to be determined that says, we're still doing the same types of things that other city employees. I don't believe the NRS makes a distinction between an elected or appointed or employed government employee, does it?
No. Again, there's no minimum retention schedule for email. The minimum retention schedule, there is a thousand-page document that the Nevada State Library and Archives puts together that lays out a minimum retention schedule for all types of documents. It's very, very dense and comprehensive. And, you know, for email, there's just several types of documents that could be, that it could, there's different categories that it could, and, and some, there's emails that are required to be kept as long as a year. And so then there's much shorter ones. Most email is not considered a public record if it's just conversation or just getting a point across, you know, or, you know, the public record also depends on who created it. You know, then that's who has the obligation to keep it, things like that. There's a flow chart in that bulletin that does a helpful.
Yeah, I, I get lots of junk mail that I didn't create, didn't ask for, or anything else. I have no compunction about deleting those as soon as they're received, but those, I don't believe meet the definition of being a public record.
No, they do not.
If I'm being sent a solicitation to sign up for some webinar by a non-governmental agency, that's not a public record, my understanding of what a public record is.
No, that's correct. But, you know, the only issue is that if there's a public records request for, say, if someone requests all, all, you know, emails with a certain search term, and we, we produce all of that, you know, staff doesn't have the time to go through all of it and say, well, this is a public record and this isn't.
And I can trust you, neither do we. And, and we're, you know, again, we're subject to that same law, so we do have to go through our email. I mean, that occurred, if we're thinking of the same email or records request, you know, I invested many hours, I'm sure I had at least 20 hours into going through things. So I do understand that, but, you know, right now, we seem to have a disconnect between how we can function, as Councilmember Folda pointed out, we're not here, we're, we're not, we don't share the same system that the city does, that other city employees do. So I think that's one issue, and if that's being looked into, you know, I'm certainly willing to listen to what solutions might, staff might be able to, to develop. The other thing is that, you know, to say something is an administrative policy, or practice, or procedure, or whatever, you know, I'm sure I can find the charter language that establishes that the council is responsible for identifying the distribution of work and, and other language that's in the charter. So, you know, let's try and come to an agreement and, and not worry about turf battles or any of that. I, I, again, I would go back to the point that we must meet at least the minimum of the NRS, but that doesn't say that that establishes our policy for retention beyond those periods of time.
That's correct.
Okay, well, this is for possible action. I would say that city staff has listened to us, is taking action to develop some suggestions. So I'm happy to wait until those bear fruit and get offered to us, and if anyone still has concerns, we can always bring it back to a future council meeting. Councilmember Hoskins?
I'd just like to clarify a few things. I, I do have my files separated, like when we had to do a certain particular issue we had, it was very easy for me to go through, and I know that you were, complimented me on that. I, my biggest concern is that I don't believe the six-month period is long enough. I've had to look up too many things, and they were not there. So that's, that's where I'm bringing up these issues. So, thank you.
And I agree with you. I, I, at least what I've heard tonight is that staff will look into potential ways that we may be able to save it elsewhere.
Yes.
But quite honestly, outside of Outlook, you know, yeah, I know, we've got, you know, all these other things, Dropbox and OneDrive and all that kind of stuff. Well, those aren't established policies, as far as I'm aware.
No, we're, we're looking into, and we've already reached out to VC3, Ben is working with Pat, and I've been involved in those conversations. We're going, we're looking at a SaaS product, software as a, I think it's software as a.
Solution?
Yeah, I think. Software.
See, that, that's a great, you know.
SaaS.
IT term, software as a solution.
Software as a service.
Software is always solutions, it's never a problem.
It's software as, I'm really bad with my acronyms tonight. Software as a service, and it's really pretty reasonably priced. And so I've also reached out to our Laserfish representative, our, what we call a VAR, and I'm not even going to try that acronym tonight, because I'm like bat and zero. And so he also has recommended a product. I think, you know, just, just the advancement of our system as a whole, you know, this is something we need to do. And so I appreciate you bringing it up, and it's also good going forward, you know, just for future councils, you know, technology's always advancing, and we try to stay on top of that. We're very fortunate to have VC3. So we will certainly provide more information and, and help you get those emails in a place where it's easily searchable, and you can keep them, and we can even help you set up folder structures, anything you need to, to do that. I, I, I said it in briefings, I keep, I have emails that are 15 years old. Every email I've had from the Secretary of State, every email from the Clark County Election Department, I have kept, because I use them as references, I'm sure you, you council members do as well. So I understand, and so we will work to get you something that works for you.
Thank you. And again, I, I think it needs to be standardized, and again, we may all have different opinions, but, you know, I, I know I worked in IT for a number of years, and the response was always, if you don't like it, it's the only system you're going to get. So once we agree on something, I think, you know, it needs to be something that's standardized, because otherwise, that will get you into legal trouble as well.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, then? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. I believe I mentioned, I asked you this last night, if we were to want to move for, instead of 180 days or whatever it is for retention, but we wanted to move towards a year, do we currently have the capacity to handle that much server load?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right. So, so even with all the talks of additional products and all that other sort of stuff, we're already capable, at least within-house, to handle an increase from six months to one year?
We do, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And again, the, the only thing I would remind everyone is, if we're not doing the same things that everybody else is doing, that's how you get in trouble. Okay? Any other questions or comments? All right. Again, thank you all for looking into that, and we will now move to item number 12, city council appointments. First is Parks and Recreation Commission, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The term of Chuck Pickens expires on 1/4/2021. The Parks and Rec Commission is comprised of seven members who serve four-year terms. Mr. Pickens is interested in reappointment. He was originally appointed in 2012 for a term beginning in 2013, and then reappointed in '17. Volunteer data sheets of residents interested in serving on the Parks and Rec Commission were attached in your packet, and after the packet was published, we had a volunteer who actually had volunteered for, to serve on the pool committee, but since there But since there wasn't an opening, we called him. It looked like he had some really good experience. And he said he would be willing to serve on Parks and Rec and planning, or he was willing to be considered. And his name is Stephen Robbins. So, his data sheet was sent to you earlier today and it's also on the DIES. So, I'm asking the council to appoint one member to the Parks and Rec Commission for a four-year term ending 1/1/2025.
All right, so anyone wishing to make a nomination? This would be for the Parks and Recreation Committee. Councilmember Folda?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to nominate Jacob Cody.
Thank you. Any other recommendations?
I'd like to nominate Charles Pickens.
Any others? Councilmember Bridges?
I would like to also recommend Charles Pickens to continue.
Okay, right now, we're just looking for names.
Names, okay.
Okay? Any other different names? All right. I will move to close the nominations for the Parks and Recreation Committee. Do I have a second on that?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now, we will then have a vote. I believe it was Jacob Cody. All those in favor of Mr. Cody?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, that's two in favor of Mr. Cody. And the other name was Mr. Pickens. All those in favor of Mr. Pickens?
Aye.
Aye.
So, that is three votes for Mr. Pickens. Mr. Pickens is appointed or reappointed.
Thank you. The next is the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is comprised of seven members who serve four-year terms. The terms of Steve Walton and Ernie Biasek expire on January 1, 2021. Both members are interested in reappointment. And again, there were some additional volunteer data sheets that came in after the packet was published in addition to the volunteers that were included in the packet. So, I'm asking the council to appoint two members to the Planning Commission for a term expiring January 1, 2025.
All right, anyone wishing to make a nomination? Councilmember Adams?
Yes, I would like to nominate Mr. Stephen Walton.
Any other nominations? Councilmember Folda?
Thank you. I'd like to nominate Ernest Biscotti, please.
Okay, any others? I will nominate Mr. Tom Marvin, Thomas Marvin. Any others? Okay, I will move to close nominations.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will start first then with Mr. Walton. So, yes, we get to vote for two. But we will start with Mr. Walton. How many votes are there for Mr. Walton? Two? Okay, and how many votes are there for Mr. Debiasek? Three?
Four.
Four, excuse me? And how many votes are there for Mr. Tom Marvin? Okay, Councilmember Bridges, you are eligible to vote for.
Okay, oh, I'm Debiasek.
Yeah.
And Walton.
Okay, so, it's unanimous then for Mr. Debiasek. And it is two votes for Mr. Walton and three votes for Mr. Marvin then.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to item number 13 for possible action, Discussion and Staff Directive Regarding the Capital Improvement Projects. Mr. Lutrell is back.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, item number 13. Sorry, there's a hair block. I was messing with my vision. Item number 13 is asking for authorization to proceed on a number of CIP projects in discussion with the Finance Director and the City Manager. We didn't feel that we're quite comfortable asking for authorization for all of the general fund projects, just not knowing where we're going to be at in the future with our revenues. I know all the CIP funding, all the CIP projects were funded back in last May. But we're afraid if we ask for authorization and we're granted authorization, that if we were to go ahead and spend all that money and then if we don't get any more revenue for the rest of the year, then next year, if an emergency came up, then we wouldn't have the funding. So, at this time, I'm just asking for four from the general fund, but from outside funding sources, three of them are RTC-funded projects. And one is a CDBG project, the lend-a-hand at cottages 3. You'll see, starting on page 272 of your packet, we have it color-coded. These are the general fund projects. Green, it's kind of like a stoplight. Green means go. We're asking for authorization to move forward on the green projects only. Yellow means that it was already proceeding forward before COVID hit. Or, we've come to you and asked for authorization to proceed and we're granted that. And then red, we just wanted to remind you that those are projects that we brought up in the workshop that we don't want to see proceed. We'd like to see that money reallocated and either brought back as a similar project with correct funding or correct scope of work or a completely different project. And then there's also a number of white items that are projects that we're, they're just leaving those on hold. And then if you proceed to page 275 of your packet, that is the utility fund projects. We're also asking for a larger number of those to proceed. All of those projects are, were included in the rate study. The money is available for those projects to proceed. So, there's three in the electrical fund, six water projects, and four wastewater that we'd like to proceed with either design or construction, depending on what needs to be done for those. So, I am happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thank you. And I think to start out with Ms. Pelletier, you had included some information regarding our current revenue picture. Could you give us just a quick rundown on that as far as where we're at? Yeah, please don't go away, Mr. Lutrell. We'll have plenty of questions for you.
Okay, so, we provided, as of October 31st, the revenues and where we're at compared to last year. And as you can see, the taxes is under what we had collected last year. Not as bad as what we budgeted because we did budget, the same as every other community in the state. We followed those guidelines. And that gave the Boulder City budget a very conservative outlook. So, we're better than where we thought we'd be, but still not up to where we were last year. So, taxes are short, the C-tax is short. And of course, we've only gotten payments on that through September. So, but it's apples to apples because last year was only paid through September. Even though it's October 31st, the funds had been received through September on that date. So, that's down 235. Charges for services are down because a lot of things aren't open for operation. Golf course revenues are up. We had a Skyler option exercised. So, there's a, we coded that as an option payment. So, that was purple. And so, overall, the year-to-date is 31% of what it was, 31% of budget. And I don't have the percentage from last year, but it was, it's 5 million difference. But some of that was helped out by the option payment. So, that option payment was not budgeted because we don't budget things that we don't know for sure. So, that has helped out a lot. And also, the CARES Act money is in there too. So, that's helped the city tremendously. But a lot of the normal things are below where they were last year at this time.
Why are we showing deficits on the CEMPER? Is that just because they've?
That's not a deficit. That's just what we've collected this year compared to last year.
Okay, so, it's just a difference in the amount of the fiscal year that had elapsed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
All of our solar lease payments are current.
So, roughly, again, the C-tax is down 235,000?
Yes.
Taxes, is that what, property tax or just says taxes?
I believe there's several taxes included in that, but that's down 45,000.
Okay, and then the charges for services.
Of course, a lot of things are not running. So, we're not collecting a lot of fees for that stuff. And then the pluses, like I said, are the Skyler option, which was a big plus to help the city. And the CARES Act money, of course, and that amount is 1.5 million. So, that helps to make up for those other losses at this point. And the reason why we're not recommending that we go forward on all the projects is because there's still, even though, you know, I agree, there's a vaccine out there and we're cautiously optimistic, but, you know.
We're definitely not out of the woods yet. And, you know, we're in a pause period right now at the governor's directive. So, that will probably lead to fewer taxes being paid on products and services. Okay, again, I just felt it was necessary that we all get an idea of where we're at. I would say roughly then less than half a million dollars down from the previous year. And when you look at the Skyler option and the CARES Act money, we're probably actually ahead of last year at this point.
But that's not consistent. I mean, those are like one-shot things. And I think I'll feel better by the time we get to January. We'll have a little bit more data to analyze. There just really isn't much at this point from the big-ticket items we get.
Okay. Any other questions regarding our current revenue picture? Councilmember Folda?
Yeah, I just wanted to expand. And I asked this during briefing because it shows that some of our solar are at zero for this fiscal year. And can you explain why it's not? Because they're not paying?
Right, they're just not due. It's different due dates on these leases.
Okay, so that, they haven't been impacted in not paying. It's just that we have a different pay scale for three different solar projects. So, I mean, that kind of, just to show that there's not, there's not income coming in from them because quite a few of them are at zero. But this is since July, from July to roughly September. Is that correct?
October, well, it's October 31st on this report.
But the payment is as of?
But some of these payments are due at the first of the year.
Okay.
You know, like that.
So, we'll get it midway in the fiscal year. Thank you.
Any other questions regarding the revenues? Councilmember Adams?
It kind of straddles both the revenues and then also the CIP projects in general. With regards to what is still on hold and what we're waiting for, what are we, when are we hoping that we can maybe begin to start looking at those other projects based on, you know, where we're at right now financially? And then where we're hoping, like you said, you're hoping January will get more data. But when, what is kind of the timeline that we're kind of looking at?
Unless some fantastic event occurs, I don't believe we'll be coming back to ask you to let us proceed with these projects until probably, I would say, April, May. And by then, we'll almost be in the new fiscal year. But, you know, I mean, some fantastic thing may happen that changes, you know, things seem to change quickly, you know. But right now, I don't see us coming to you in January saying we'd like to continue, you know, start up on all the projects, not at this time. I don't feel there's enough information out there to be comfortable doing that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bridges?
Okay, I guess I'm looking at those. I have no problem with the ones that are funded by outside entities. But the green ones, when they're presented to us the first time around in the original CIP, these are priority one, correct? I mean, these were, some of the one that was 2019, that was a priority one when it was presented initially.
Which projects are you talking about, on the general fund or utilities?
The utility, S1901. My first thought when I'm looking is, okay, which are the really, really important ones? And I'm thinking then, if it's 2019, that means last year it was a really important one.
Yeah, some of them are 19, some are 20. You'll even notice that there's some that are even older on there. I don't have the priority list in front of me, but I know there is a number of those, especially on the electrical side, that we'd really like to proceed on those just to make sure that we're getting the repairs made before we gotta, stuff starts falling down.
That's fine, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Folda?
Thank you. I just, I think it's kind of unfortunate that we are kind of having this conversation because back in May, when we had this proposed by the City Manager, Noyola, I did ask him specifically if it was city funds he was saying that were on hold. And he confirmed that's what that was and that we, I've kind of had the agreement that, okay, we're talking about city general fund things that will continue on with things that are intergovernmental or paid out or utility because those things weren't affected by COVID in our budget. And so, I feel that it's unfortunate that this much time has gone by with that misunderstanding still out there to clarify at this point. And so, I'm glad we are clarifying it. But I think it's just unfortunate that there's been this misunderstanding for, like, since May.
Yeah, that's part of that misunderstanding or all of that misunderstanding can be on me. I went back and looked at the minutes from the budget approval back in May 26. And the way I read it, I understood it that if a project wasn't already moving forward, it was not to proceed until January 1. So, if I misunderstood that, that's definitely on me.
Well, I think it's on all of us, you know, don't take it wrong. But, you know, I think there was just kind of a misconception, I think, between what City Council was thinking was being proposed and then what maybe was being administratively done. So, I'm glad that we can clarify it this time. Because, you know, I think, and I'm agreement to this, that these are things that are proceeded from outside funds or utility funds, which weren't affected as much by our budget. So, for the record, please state that these funds should be approved.
And that makes perfect sense to me. And that's, I had questioned it a few times internally to staff and, because that's how I would have interpreted it, it was the same way. But I didn't want to assume anything.
And I think we need to look at too. I mean, the breakdown that Ms. Pelletier gave us is more involving our general fund.
Correct.
And what we're looking at here is our capital improvement fund. So, I think, you know, we all should keep that in mind as well. You know, let's have a rundown on what the capital improvement fund does look like. I know that it does depend somewhat on new money coming in from the solar leases, things like that. But there's money in that budget already. You know, again, there's a lot of caution that if we were to have to do something, and I know the legislature has made it almost impossible to go back into that capital improvement budget. But if things get bad enough, I'll guarantee you, the legislature will fix that for us. So, let's take a look at it from that standpoint as well. And certainly, the RTC-funded projects, flood control, things like that, where the majority of that money is coming in from outside agencies. You know, again, bring those forward, but let's not hesitate on anything of that nature.
Very good.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I do have, Mr. Mazid reminded me that I left off one of my requests for the capital improvement project list, which is an entry sign into town for the high school. But that should be below the 25, better be below the $25,000. but that should be below the 25, better be below the $25,000 limit, but. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Folda?
I just want to clarify, so what we're approving tonight is not the capital improvement list as it is, but the green items in this proposed list.
Yes, four for the general fund, but RTC, three RTC, one is the CDBG grant, and then 13 are utility funded projects.
Right, and a lot of those other projects will come back to us with the CIP that we're going to be talking about, because they're tied to other projects in the future.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And again, the yellow projects are in progress, is that correct?
Yeah, they're in progress. There's actually a number of them that are already complete. They just haven't been, the paperwork hasn't been finalized, it hasn't been closed in the books. Um, so you will see a number of those being basically crossed off the list.
All right. Councilmember Bridges?
Oops, I had a quick question about the remodel cottage. We're doing the remodel, we're, I mean, the C, CDBG funds are being used for it, but do we contract, the city's contracting for the remodel as opposed to lending?
Yes, we're, uh, try, we, as soon as we can move forward on that, we'll proceed with design. It would be a, most likely a contract coming forward to proceed with that and then, um, having the remodel done.
Wonderful. I know they, they seemed quite excited to know where to go forward in the last meeting.
Yeah, yeah, we were, uh, Mr. Mazid and I had met with them a number of months ago, setting up a timeline, and COVID is, uh, making it go a little slower than we had hoped.
Any other questions or comments? All right, well, I'll make a motion then to proceed with the items in green.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Luttrell.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to our last public comment period. Uh, public comment during this period may be on any issue. Uh, the time limit again is five minutes. Anyone wishing to speak, the phone number is 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, did we have any emails or voicemails for the final public comment?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I have some that were submitted today, and then I just checked my email and there, and one came in after the meeting started, so I'll have to read that as well.
Okay, if you, go ahead, please.
This is from Chris Brannon. Hello, and thank you, thank you for your time to hear me. I am part of a group of radio-controlled vehicle enthusiasts here in Boulder City. We like to get together with our children and have fun driving our cars, trucks in the dirt. We've been interested in doing this activity in a more secure area like a track setting. There is one available in Henderson which charges $75 a day to rent out the entire track, but it is a drive out of Boulder City. In doing some research, we actually have a RC club and track right here in Boulder City. We could become members of this club and accept the insurance to be covered as a member, but the operator of the track is not interested in anything to do with a dirt track and only interested in the asphalt portion of this facility. I would like to propose that the council consider sectioning off a small portion of the leased land to allow us to use the dirt portion of this facility or possibly find a portion of vacant Boulder City land that we would be allowed to build a dirt RC track for the people of Boulder City. Thank you. Next is from Keith Jacques. I am commenting in regard to the Boulder City RC track. A large group of us Boulder City residents every week take our RC cars out along with our children. In these times where sports are closed off, our BMX track is closed, we are all looking for something to actively do with our children outside. This group of us parents and RC car enthusiasts would very much like the opportunity to take over the dirt RC track, provide an activity for some of our kids and other residents to take part in the fall, along with the guidelines of Boulder City, and create a safe and happy environment where these kids can get out and have some fun. Please let us bring back our RC track that is currently not being used at all and hasn't for some time. I would also like to comment on the closure of the Boulder City BMX track because the BMX track is closed due to COVID restriction, restrictions, which in many people's part doesn't make much sense. All the children are wearing helmets, the parents were, I think he meant to say, wearing face coverings, are even willing to stay outside the fence because of this closure, all of our children. I've been forced to go ride at other BMX tracks that still remain open around the Vegas area, three to be exact, so now our local residents are going to other tracks and riding around. Other people, which I can see as being more of a risk factor than the opportunity to stay with their own community and their own local track around their own people, some food for thought. Thank you for your time and any consideration. The next is from Arthur Salmons. I am interested in using the off-road RC track with my children and our group of fellow RC enthusiasts. I am aware that a club exists for the quarter scale oval track portion of the property, but the off-road track is not available for use. Why not? I believe allowing our group to renovate and use this portion of the property will only add to the Boulder City experience. Thanks. And then, oh Lord, I don't, I don't even know if I can see it. This is from Bethany Caruso. Good evening, councilmembers. I'd like to propose a review of land lease number 00-674A for the dirt portion of the Boulder City RC track. The current lessee is asking exorbitant amounts for track use and will not open it to the public for practice. His phone number was also not on file with the city. Las Vegas RC tracks charge $100 monthly fee for membership and $17 to $22 per day of use with annual memberships available to purchase. We were quoted $500 for use of the track for a few drivers to practice. We were never given an opportunity to book the track, which is a free ground lease on city-owned land. It is a disservice to Boulder City residents for a parcel of land to be held by one person who refuses to allow anyone to use it and does not use it himself. In addition, per the land lease, section six, the lessee is to keep the fencing, grading, landscaping, lighting, and track surface and structures maintained. There are currently seven breaks in the fence and weeds two to four feet tall. See section 12 of the lease. We would like to propose an agenda item to discuss changing the lessee, addressing the use of the track by the public at a fair price, and the decline of the property maintenance. Thank you. I apologize, it's Michael Caruso. And that is it for public comment.
Thank you. And again, if anyone wishes to call in, the phone number is area code 702-589-9629. close that and move to our last agenda item, city council reports. Um, we will start with Councilmember Folda.
I had a feeling you were gonna say that. So, um, I was just trying to look up the date and time. Uh, next week will be the first meeting of the Historic Preservation Ad Hoc Committee. Uh, we will be meeting Monday, the 14th at 5:00. And, um, that, this is the last city council meeting for the year, as the second one is normally vacated, and so I just want to say to everyone, happy holidays, and, and we'll see you next year. Thank you.
Councilmember Hoskins?
I have nothing to report, but I will say the same thing, happy holidays to everyone.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, um, I have no formal report, but I would like to wish everyone very happy and healthy and safe holiday season and a welcomed new year. Um, also, um, in order to still sound like a broken record, uh, we still know that there are people in our community who are struggling, uh, who have lost their jobs, who are still not employed, and, uh, there are, there are, there's assistance available at emergency aid. People are, and not as many people are using the pantry as anticipated, and, and we could certainly tell people that you could save about $400 a month by parti, by participating in the food pantry. Also, we, they enter, they offer rent and utility assistance. That's it, thanks.
Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. Um, as has been mentioned, the holiday season is upon us, but of course, like everything this year, uh, it will look unlike any others in recent memory. Um, where past seasons were marked by festive celebrations, joyous gatherings of friends and family, um, this year will be one marked by, I think, great reflection and gratitude. Uh, gratitude for those, um, who have risked their lives on the front line, you know, serving to protect and, uh, keep our communities safe. Um, we'll be thinking of those who are facing the loss of a job, their income, or even worse, uh, the loss of a friend or a family member. Um, no matter our backgrounds or our creeds, 2020 has been a tumultuous year, I think, for, for all of us. Um, I'm sure most people out there listening to me right now have some pretty pointed opinions that they'd like to share with their, uh, elected representatives, and I encourage them to do so. Um, but as our passions and our emotions risk boiling over into anger and frustration, I ask that we all remember that our quarrel is not with our fellow neighbors. And so, you know, our, our history has shown time and time again that unity in the face of, of adversity is really what leads us to prevail. So in the spirit of the holidays, I ask that, um, we think of those around us, of our, our friends, our family, our neighbors and our community, and that we, uh, we all leave 2020 behind us and we walk into the new year together.
Um, I had a meeting this morning for the Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority. Um, this was supposed to be a really good time for Las Vegas. Um, the expansion of the West Hall, the completion of the West Hall, um, they're at like 99% complete right now. Uh, the Boring Company is nearly complete with the tunnels that will have cars going underground and moving people around. And this was all geared to host CES, as Las Vegas has been doing for many years, one of the biggest conventions in the world and certainly in Las Vegas, and there it sits. Um, almost a billion-dollar project nearing completion and no convention scheduled. Uh, they did mention today, they may have their first convention coming in of June, maybe July of next year. Um, you know, revenues are down by over 50% for room sales tax, so that translates into people who are not working right now. Uh, another large hotel just announced they're cutting back on the amount of days they will be open. Uh, we are still in a difficult time, and, you know, it's already been mentioned, there are services like emergency aid. Um, there's some encouraging news in Congress, uh, don't know how quickly that might come about, but the other thing I, I hope everyone keeps in mind, as you're celebrating the holidays, Christmas and Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, all of the different holidays that have come at this time of year, we have to be safe. We're seeing the spread of infection just explode here in Clark County right now. Uh, I saw today that there were 48 deaths in Nevada yesterday. Uh, that's one of the highest numbers I can recall seeing. Uh, we're seeing that across the country. As Councilman Adams pointed out, you know, it's going to be a difficult Christmas. Please celebrate it wisely, but please do celebrate it. Things are going to look next, uh, better next year, I'm sure of that. And with that word, Jurn.